Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the special city council meeting for tonight, Wednesday, April the 6th, 2022. I will start off by asking for a roll call.
Mayor McHecron?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Councillor Tabor?
Here.
Councillor Denton?
Here.
Councillor Moreau?
Here.
Councillor Bagley?
Here.
Councillor Lombardi?
Here.
Councillor Blaylock?
Here.
Councillor Cox?
Here.
Next up, we have public comment. We ask that you limit your speaking time to three minutes and come to the microphone, starting with Paige Trace. Your name, your address, and Paige, as is every speaker, speaking on the McIntyre tonight. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Madam City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, members of the City Council. This is not a public hearing, and yet you intend to vote tonight, do you not, unless you voted already? The fact is that this is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing, and you are about to authorize a minimum of $2 million to upwards of God knows what. Because Mr. Kane and Mr. Cox and everyone else involved with the development will be able to come to you before the expenses incurred and ask you for the money, the portion of the money that the city has agreed to. So just where does the spending stop and where is the idea of the city being responsible with the money? So I say to you, there was a famous meeting on December 18th, and for all of the same reasons that you are acting out tonight by having a public meeting, not a public hearing, by curbing public speaking to three minutes and not that of a public hearing, you are going to take a vote. Now, I'm sure that it'll be 9-0. That's the one thing we can be assured of. But honestly, do you really think it's appropriate not to have a public hearing, an appropriate public hearing, for that amount of money? I really look at each and every one of you. You said a meeting on the 18th of December was not correct, it wasn't noticed properly, and ergo, you wiped it off the face of the earth. So please, think about what you're doing tonight. And think about the fact that, yes, the GSA is angry at you. I know that because I know that the GSA is angry at you all the way down in Washington. So I would suggest that you think about what you do tonight, and you look at the fact that Michael Kane can abolish any part of this project that he deems too expensive, right down to the damn toilet seats. And think about it. And you have no control and you have no way to get out of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up is Peter Whelan.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Peter Whelan. I live at 100 Gate Street. And I'm going to speak tonight, you know, in early January, I went to a trustees of the trust fund meeting, and it was at 8:00 AM in the morning. And I was quite flabbergasted because right out front was a SUV with three-digit plates on it. Lo and behold, it was Redgate Kane upstairs in City Hall having a secret meeting, two weeks after you all were sworn in. And that's what I call good karma for me, because I knew the fix was in. So I would ask you first, read the letter of termination that was written by Michael Conley, the city's attorney. It's four pages long. It goes through in detail every single thing that Redgate Kane has done to violate the development agreement. And I stand by my motion and my vote that we terminated Redgate Kane. The settlement agreement, in one word, is awful. Its onerous for the Portsmouth taxpayers. I spent more time working on McIntyre probably than any other of you sitting up here. It's awful. It's already signed by Michael Kane and Ralph Cox on page 13. So we know where they feel. This is a great deal for them. It's a bait and switch. I can just hear it now. The community plan that Russell put together is going to cost too much. Let's go back to our original plan. There's nothing in here that stops Michael Kane and Ralph Cox from doing that. This is a total rollover to the developer. $2 million. Prove it. Show me the invoices to the taxpayers. $2 million. Where is it? Then we got to pick up a third, a half of their third-party costs? They're asking for a guaranteed return. They have the ability to scrap the community plan. And that's what you guys are going to vote for tonight. This thing is garbage, this settlement agreement. It's garbage. It's a black hole for the city and the taxpayers. Total black hole. We're on the hook for everything that Michael Kane wants. If construction costs go up, Portsmouth taxpayers are going to fund it. You still have to negotiate a ground lease agreement with him. At $12,000 a month rent for the entire property, that's what he wants? And the NPS rejected that. So where are you? I bet no one has negotiated with NPS since I did back in December. And that's why you're in the fix that you're in now, is National Park Service and GSA are chomping at the book to get this off, the books.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Next up is Sue Polidora, also on the McIntyre.
Sue Polidora, 245 Middle Street. And I really read the details and the article that appear in the paper, and I had to tell you that I did not understand what those terms were. I, it's all a bunch of gobbledygook to me. But one thing I know is that the city of Portsmouth is going to be on the hook for a whole bunch of money that we really don't know what is going to be. Remember how this issue was with the McIntyre? There's two people on this dais tonight that were elected to City Council because of this project, because the people's opposition to it. And now tonight, I'm sure you're going to vote for it, I mean, but it's not going to stop here. I can guarantee you that. Because the more you read into that and the more the details come out, people are going to get angry and they're going to take action and this is going to be a never-ending proposition. I can guarantee you that. I wish that the park system would say, I'm sorry, we're done with this. These have divided the city in so many ways, and now we're putting a huge liability on the residents of Portsmouth. And it's like, yeah, I want something developed there, but I want something closer to what people want, not to benefit one particular entity, but to benefit everybody. And this is what the plan that was developed for the last year and a half indicates, for you to ignore it. I think it's really reprehensible. I don't know where this is going. You need to be aware of what you're doing, and you need to know that it's not going to stop here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next up is Roy Helsel.
Good evening. Roy Helsel, 777 Middle Road. With the renewal of the city's agreement with Redgate Kane, developers on the McIntyre project, is the developer going to dictate in the design and what the people of Portsmouth, or what the people of Portsmouth want, such as open green space, no large buildings, outside covering area, and other developer proposed? What the other developer proposed for the city is what the taxpayers really want. If Redgate Kane are partners with the city in the McIntyre project, they never acted like partner before in this development to date. Are they going to be partners with the city or dictate maximum profits for the next 75 years? Just think about it, because nothing in the agreement that I read was nothing but lawyer talk. It didn't tell us anything that you're going to vote for tonight. And if you vote for and give them the key, we're going to be in trouble as taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Next up is Rick Beckstead.
Good evening, Rick Beckstead, 1395 Islington Street. I guess the public basically has to make assumptions that you're going to make a vote based on the criticism that the last council received, and we even have one of the criticisms is Councillor Laznby in the back of the room. There was no motion that was actually on the agenda. So I'm going to hope that there is no motion, because there's nothing that appears on the agenda. I wanted to come down today because history, I think, is what's important. I still don't understand why everyone feels obligated that Michael Kane is the best for the city. And I've come down with a solution, or basically an answer to that, an obligation that goes back to previous city managers, previous city councillors. Back in the day, there was a piece of property up at Bothwick Avenue. It was up for rezoning. And Mr. Kane, still to this day, owns that property. And I believe that people that were running the city at that time had promised Mr. Kane that it would be rezoned. They went through their first reading, they went through their second reading, and at the third and final reading, it was denied. And I think promises were made to Mr. Kane. And I think basically this is basically the payback for not getting what he was promised back in the day. Period. Simple. I mean, I have to draw to some kind of conclusion that we go and we have somebody that has gone and multiple times sued the city, two times over the Bothwick Avenue, once over the U.S. Post Office, because he wasn't allowed to go into an auction. And Mayor McHecron and Councillor Tabor, you saw the tantrums that led up to an election. I mean, I'm not sure what's exactly going to happen tonight. I'm certainly in hopes that it's not. I know that Michael was a big fan of this council, even have your biggest cheerleader and your correspondence for the last election. I still have serious doubts when it comes to it, but I certainly hope that you are not about to go and do that, especially seeing that this is, should have been, a public hearing. I still think that we would have to have some kind of a public hearing for you to go and spend $2 million. You'd have to have at least, at least a reading for the public to be able to go and weigh in and not jam it into less than an hour, because I'm sure we'll be asked to finish up quicker. So I'm going to ask the mayor basically to postpone this meeting if there is any action that is going to be taken tonight, to be able to truly go and give Portsmouth what it needs. This is a lifetime project. This will benefit my children, possibly my grandchildren, hopefully, and it needs its weight. It does not deserve to be ignored like 600 residents were when they signed a petition when I was on the council my first term in August of 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next up is Esther Kennedy.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. Tonight, I think we should talk process. There was an RFP put out by our city. We let it fall. There was $2 million that we just all read about, and there's been no public hearing announced, just a public comment session. That's process. You are expending funds. Then I look at the document, and it looks like the document was already sent to court as of yesterday. So that means there was probably already a vote. Again, that's process. So I'm really taken back. As you know, the community had a wish, and one wish was to be heard. The wish was to look at the McIntyre. And that didn't happen previously. It was formed by a council and certain people, and we had, we allowed the public to speak with Mayor McHecron and Councillor Tabor on that group. And they spoke. And they said what they wanted. And we put that forward. So the public tonight, I'm actually kind of pleased so many came at such short notice. But all they're asking for is clarity. They want to know, was there a vote? We want to know, will there be a public comment on the money you're spending? All we are asking for is to understand your process. And when Mr. Beckstead said that the last vote in the third reading was voted down, I was part of that, to vote down what Mr. Kane, and I know Mr. Sullivan at the time said that's the first time he's ever seen that. It's okay to say no, folks, as long as you're working for the people. And the people are asking you to build this project. And what I read today really has to question what out you have as a city. Who is this document for? Is it for the citizens or is it for a developer? That's the question you need to ask. And hopefully, you come up with, you want a document for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, Petra Huda.
Petra Huda, 280 South Street. First of all, this special meeting does not satisfy the requirements under the Charter Section 7.14, Amendments to the Budget After Adoption. So if you do decide to vote on this tonight, you'll be in the violation of the Charter again. If you haven't already done so, before your vote on this, the worst contract ever for the taxpayers of Portsmouth, I strongly suggest you view the City Council public hearing for McIntyre of 7/31/19. Please pay close attention to the presentation of the late, great Paul McEccron. As history is repeating itself here, but we have a switch in the roles of the McEccrons. The same issues exist here today. No transparency, no public notice, as the city staff again has taken over with the process. We have no public input, no questions answered, no debates or comments, just like in the March 15, 2019 breakout session. This is being rammed down, rammed through like so many other non-public, non-transparent meetings. You lost count. The best clue that the developer wrote the contract is on page three. "The city shall reimburse developers for costs before they're incurred." Who puts this in a contract? Where are the contingencies from the first contract? Have any, anybody, has anybody up there even read the first contract and compared it to this, so we could see if the city is protected under contingencies? Because it really looks like the only contingencies in here fully cover the developer. Expenses, $2 million for expenses occurred before 1/16/18. What are these expenses? I'm a taxpayer. I want to know what I'm paying for. Like in the real world, we have to submit expense reports. It would be great to know what we are paying for as taxpayers. Also, in looking at the agreement, like Councillor, former Councillor Kennedy said, it looks like we're already signed already. How could this be filed with the court yesterday, and you're coming to us today? Has it been voted on already? Do we know? As taxpayers, we're all left in the dark again. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next up, Pat Bagley.
Good evening. Pat Bagley, 213 Pleasant Street. On February 10th, I stood here at another special City Council meeting. There was no discussion, there was public comment, and I asked you if I was talking to the air. I asked you if you had already decided on your vote. Here we are again tonight with a 24-hour notice of a meeting, and I'm asking you the same question. I'm hoping the answer is that all of you are at least thinking about your vote, if you haven't already taken it. Everything we're not hearing, you cloak under the word litigation. You don't tell us anything. There has been nothing said about McIntyre. This is a document. There's nothing said about it. You don't, you can't even discuss it before we have public comment. What are we commenting on? We're just standing here ranting and sounding like crazy people who are angry. And we are angry. We're angry at you, and you're a new council. This is not the way to behave. I understand the word litigation is now the new F-word in my house, but this is just, it's just ridiculous. And I, here's a question. If the GSA does not grant such extension, this agreement shall be null and void, and the status quo immediately prior to execution of this agreement shall be restored. What does that mean? Does that mean we go back to litigation? Could somebody just nod or say no? You're not allowed to do that? Thank you. This is just insane. Fourth, fourth page. "Upon determination of the updated development and construction costs following completion of design and construction, pricing prior to closing, the pro forma shall be adjusted to reflect actual costs." All this is written for the benefit of the developer. There is nothing in here that I feel protects us as citizens. You are us. We voted for you. You're there to protect us. And I feel as though we're just locked in under the power of Kane-Redgate, Redgate-Kane, however you want to pronounce it. And you guys are just, you're not serving us, because you can't say anything because of litigation. Councillor Tabor, Portsmouth listens. We invested a ton of time and energy and belief in that process. I don't want Michael Kane saying, well, this roof won't work, or this building won't work, or it's going to cost too much and we should change it. It's just not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next is Claire Kittredge.
Hi. Claire Kittredge, 27 Franklin Street. I'm in a hurry because I've got to go rehearse the Ukrainian national anthem with my chorus in honor of some people who are valiantly fighting for their democracy. And I'm not a financial expert, but just looking through the document, I don't see any protection, financial protections. I don't see any, anything specifying what it's going to cost the city of Portsmouth, beyond $2 million and then some fraction of something. But I don't see anything protecting the city. Bob, you're the city attorney. Does this protect the city? You're a lawyer. Anyway, that's all I have to say. It's repetitive. It also feels like it's being rushed through in a big hurry.
Thank you, Claire. That's, oh, Dick Bagley.
Dick Bagley, 213 Pleasant Street. I arrived a bit late, and I really have no idea what's going on, but I have listened to the few people that have preceded me. And I prepared a few remarks that touch on what has already been said. Gives me a bit, I'm getting to that age where I can't see without my glasses. So I think we've highlighted already the transparency issue. We came here for a last meeting to rescind the last council's vote, and it was putatively because Doug Roberts had filed a lawsuit, and the process wasn't appropriate for the last council to take the vote. What we learned in that process was, in fact, it had really nothing to do with Doug Roberts' lawsuit, because as we heard from Councillor Moreau, he had already taken the decision. In fact, there was already legal action, as Bill had outlined at a subsequent meeting, with regard to that action. And then I think we would have to say, without prejudice, that it was a little ridiculous to hear from McHecron, the, excuse me, Mayor McHecron, no insult intended, that in fact you were being very transparent, when you weren't transparent at all. And then you had the gall to mention your father about how important it was to follow the lawyer. And from the little I know about Paul, a great man, and I hope you follow in his footsteps, there is no question that he would say, follow the law as the facts present themselves, not follow the lawyer. And so that's discouraging when we come here again tonight without any explanation as to what this is really all about. But we know John Tabor, right now, broke a confidentiality agreement related to the Redgate-Kane decision, and I thought it was interesting that he somehow feels it was okay, because, you know, he was trying to do the right thing by being transparent. I'm not aware that any decision's been made by the ethics group that we have here, but what I do know that it's likely to end up very much like Jim Splain, when he broke confidential information in a non-public meeting, and sort of said, I'm sorry, but I think we, you know, the public had a right to know. And that's And that isn't really how the law operates. And the, the real difficulty is, he disclosed this information to someone in the last, in what I call the Blaylock Eight, that was dead-set against anything that Rick Wexler had ever tried to do. So you have to believe, as a reasonable person, that John was motivated by retaliation. He's shaking his head, no, but a reasonable person, John, would conclude otherwise. And I think that's discouraging, because also on the original, so-called Blaylock Eight was Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the list of speakers that we have.
What's your last chance to sign up? I signed up.
I came in late.
You signed up? Oh, third page.
I guess I missed a page. Thank you. My name's Tom Neese, 419 Richards Avenue. I'd like to start off by pointing out, I've never commented on the McIntyre project in the three or four years it's been going on. I followed it from a distance, but never felt really qualified to weigh in very hard. And I understand there's, I understand and kind of support trying to move forward to get this resolved, I understand that. But I am troubled a little bit about the draft agreement, for the reasons that many people have already spoken to. I find it a little bit unconscionable that you would commit the city to an unspecified amount of spending. You know, we know the $2 million, we have no idea what the 25% is, we don't know what the final cost will be. So it's pretty open-ended. And, you know, that seems troubling at the least. It seems to conflict with the city charter, because you're essentially making any later budget hearing to amend the budget somewhat moot, if you've got a signed agreement that says you've agreed to spend these dollars. I also feel that there doesn't, don't seem to be many elements in this agreement to protect the city's interests. And that's a concern to me. There've been a number of agreements that the city has negotiated over the years. Portwalk Place, originally, most of you weren't around, you may not remember, but they originally agreed to have an extra floor of parking that they would rent to the city. If the city backed out of that agreement, it was going to cost us 75 grand. Portwalk Place backed out of it, didn't cost them a dime. So there's a history of the city writing these agreements that don't provide us these protections when we deal with commercial developers. So I'd urge you to at least take a breath, try and take a closer look at this agreement, and see if you can fashion an agreement that does include some protections from the city. I would also urge you to try and let the public know, what sort of dollars are we talking about? You can be darn sure that the developer has a pretty good idea of what he's willing to spend on this. And if we're going to pay, I don't remember exactly the formula, but if we're going to pay some percentage of that, it ought to be easy for us to at least say, we're going to spend roughly this amount of money before we do this agreement. And it seems like that would be something useful to be able to tell the citizens. It seems like that's something you would also want to know before you could agree to sign the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. That is the end of the public comment session.
Came in late, can we get up to the podium?
How many people?
I wasn't here to sign up. Oh, come on.
How many peo, we, how many people? Two people? Come on up.
Sorry, I got in late. Mary Lou McKellaway, 259 South Street. And I want to talk about the financial end of this. Where is the $2 million coming from? And where is it going to end? This summer, I understand that our homes and our businesses will be revalued. That's going to have a shock to each and every one of us, in this room and at home. And we really need to know about the finances. Is this project, in the long run, going to drop, going to leave many of us out in the lurch, literally out of Portsmouth? So I think we need more information on the finances. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
Mark Brighton, South Mill Street. I have one very simple question. What are you people hiding? You posted this, what, 24 hours ago? And we're supposed to have read this and, and taken it in? I mean, this is disgraceful. Good Lord. There's only one conclusion that being drawn, that you're hiding something, and something is just rotten in Denmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. With that, ending the public comment session, we had a, an agreement that was posted to the agenda last night. There's been a few questions on that. Before I opened up to the council, I would ask Attorney Sullivan to walk through a couple of, a couple of things. One, the timing of this, if we could explain the timing of this and the deadline that we are under, as well as the protections with regards to previous litigation that this, this document entails.
Yes, Your Honor. Settlement of this case, if it happens, was driven in very, very, very large part by actions of the General Services Administration. The city has been engaged in an effort to acquire this property at no cost, under the federal monument program, for a number of years now. GSA advised the city manager 13 days ago, I believe it was, that the clock was running out, and that unless we were able to convince GSA by tomorrow, that we had a realistic plan to proceed and file an application with the National Park Service and acquire this property under the monument program, that, to use my words, GSA was going to pull the plug on us, and no longer allow any time for that to occur. GSA would then dispose of the property under the federal surplus property program, which basically would amount to selling it for market value. So, starting about two weeks ago, we had about two weeks to try to come up with a plan to convince GSA to let us stay in the monument program. The primary and major obstacle that we had to putting together that plan was the existence of the SOBO lawsuit, which sought, among other things, to have the court order that the city could not do anything with that building, other than deal with SOBO Square, Redgate Kane, under the provisions of an existing development agreement that was in place. So during the period of time that we had negotiate, the city manager began negotiations that very day, the meeting with GSA was in Boston, and when we got back from Boston, she began negotiations that very day, to try to get over this preliminary hurdle, so that we could stay in the monument plan, and maybe get the building for a dollar. Those negotiations were intense and continuous. Negotiations and litigation are confidential, and couldn't and shouldn't be discussed in public. The city council met a number of times, as, as you know, I think, is participating in those negotiations. And the result of the negotiations was not reached until yesterday at about 4:00 PM. There was no document to circulate to anybody before that time. Within several minutes of the agreement between the city and SOBO, as to what the settlement agreement might look like, it was posted to the public. Now, I, I'd like to address the comment that sufficient time wasn't allowed for everybody in the city to see that. The first reason is, what I just said, there wasn't time. But the second is this, our former government is a representative democracy. People in the city have elected the city councilors who are at this table to represent them, and make their decisions on their behalf. Whereas it impractical and impossible that everybody in the whole city could have been involved in that process for those last 13 days, just physically impossible. Your councilors that you elected were involved continuously throughout doing your business. It's the way the system is supposed to work. It's the only way the system could work in a situation like this. So that's what happened. Yesterday, at 4:00, we finally got a proposed draft settlement agreement with SOBO Square, Redgate Kane, and it was posted immediately. So that, I think, addresses the first of the, the managers, I mean, the mayor's question. The second one is, what is in this document that protects the city? We heard a few comments about that. And the document that protects the city more than anything else in this settlement agreement is the attachment, Exhibit 1, which reads that, if this case in fact settles, the document will be filed with the court, signed by both parties, which says that the docket in this case may be marked, quote, "Neither party, no costs, no interest, no attorney's fees, no further claim for any cause of action arising prior to April 5, 2022, with prejudice." Which means, if this settlement agreement comes into being and gets recorded, nothing that happened prior to yesterday can have, can be the basis for any further litigation against the city, against prior city councils, against prior city councilors, against anybody. And that is what is in here that protects the city. That is the main thing that protects the city. Your Honor, I think those were your two questions.
Thank you, Attorney Sullivan. I had a question for the city manager in the, I think, I forget who asked, but where is the $2 million coming from? Could we answer, could we answer that?
We can, and I'll speak to both source and process. This would, this appropriate, the money would come from fund balance. We understand, given the timeframe and, and the way that things had to happen, that what we would do is, at the April 18 meeting of the city council, request a public hearing and a vote on a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation for these costs.
Thank you. Let's see, I had another question for Bob, but it has escaped me. Any councilors have any questions?
Yes, I would ask-
Counselor Ambardi.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask that the city attorney address what would happen, or what would be the implication of not forming an agreement at this time with Redgate Kane.
We are involved, and have been involved for two years, in a serious litigation, in which we were advised, at the commencement of it, by Redgate Kane, SOBO, by their lawyers, that the damages they seek from the city in this case, and the case is still pending today, the damages that they seek in this case are in the tens of millions of dollars. And the reason they give for why the city might owe them tens of millions of dollars is that they believe the city has breached a contract, under which they would have occupied that structure for 75 years, I think it is. And all of the profits that they might have achieved from owning that building, or acquiring, occupying the building for 75 years, are monies that they are losing, lost profits that they are losing because of this claimed breach of contract. And if you accept that theory, if they could prove that theory to a court, then they would in fact recover millions of dollars. We are not conceding that they could prove it. But we are avoiding that fight, if we settle the case.
Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor, excuse me. I feel it's incumbent on me to, to say something that's come up, I think, three times now, with this meetings on this particular project, but as a counselor, you know, it's our job to represent people, we're fair game, but I think it's unfortunate that in public comment, family members would be brought up. So nothing to do with this particular project, but I would ask the public that they aim the arrows squarely at the councilors, and, and leave the family members out of the discussion. Thank you.
Oh, well, I, I think, I appreciate that, Counselor Bagley. I think that was in regards to, to my father. I assure you that he would love that his name is brought up in City Hall. He would push back on how he was misquoted, and I would take the personal privilege to state to Mr. Bagley, in this case Dick Bagley, that the, what he had opined to me repeatedly was not to follow the law, although I think that was implied, but to listen to your attorney. And I think that was out of, you know, his own personal perspective as an attorney, that one should be listened to when it comes to the dealings of the law, because the law can be tricky. And it is difficult to be an expert on that, and I don't claim to be, but I was his son, and I remember that with crystal clarity, that it was listen to your attorney, and he stated it many, many times. But I, I bring his name up, and it would not be fair for me to bring it up, and for you not to, and he, he smiles every time we do. So I appreciate it, Counselor Bagley, but please, he, he wouldn't be upset. Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. My question for city attorney, it is, there were questions today of what plan is, is reached in this agreement. Could you clarify that for, for the question?
I'm sorry, of what, I didn't?
There were, there were questions from the speakers of which plan, as many-
Oh, yeah, okay, sure, that's, that's simple. The, this plan is aimed entirely towards redeveloping a property under the so-called community or people's plan. It does not allow for any other option but that.
Thank you.
And on that, I have another question for the city attorney. Did the city council vote on this, this plan before it has been brought here tonight, signed by SOBO Square?
No, Your Honor, if, if I may, take a little bit of liberty here, that was at your insistence, that the matter not be brought forward until it was signed by the other side.
And when it comes to, my priority is as a counselor, and, and way as a counselor as, as the mayor, but I'm still simply one vote in this. It was two distinct things that I have been working on as, as one of nine here. The first was to settle the prior litigation, without a doubt, so that the city could negotiate with our development partner to build the community plan. It was incredibly important for me to settle the litigation, because I could not see how we would ever have a fair and equitable negotiation with a development partner, if there was still the potential, not just for litigation to resume, and if we dismissed the case without prejudice, for it potentially to be brought up again. And all of the conversations that have gone on in, in this town, some by council, some in the public, public comment responding, I couldn't imagine that they would be as part of any lawsuit going forward. And so, a requirement that this case would be settled without prejudice, or with prejudice, up until yesterday, was important. The second was the desire to build the community plan. It is incredibly important to me to see that through, to give us the best opportunity to build the community plan. to build the community plan. The National Monuments Program through the National Park Service is our best bet because of the price tag that we get for that, and that being a dollar. I spent a lot of time working on that. I echo the members of the community that have stated as such, that there was a lot of time went into that. I've spent not as much as former chairman Wayland, but I would say I'm tied for second, third, and fourth place in the city of Portsmouth with that. And I wanted to see that plan come to life. And I believe, and I've been elected for my judgment, as we all have, I believe that this gives us the best pathway forward to building the community plan. Where we go from here will be up to this council, but it's the goal so that we get as clear shot to make the community plan happen, and that is the desire of which this is brought forth. So with that said, I would, I would await a motion for the city council to grant the authority to the city manager to sign and execute the development or the settlement agreement dated April 5th with Sobo Square. Any further discussion? Counselor Moreau?
I'd just like to say that I think that this entire council has put a lot of thought into all of the proposals that have been brought before us. Obviously, we've had a lot of non-public sessions, everyone knows that, but we are forefront, including everything the mayor said that all of us wanted is what's best for the city of Portsmouth and what gets the city of Portsmouth the plan that they want built. And those were our main concerns with, then also the other top concern would be in costing us the least amount of money. And looking at every possible outcome in every direction was definitely part of our thought process, and I think everyone should know that. Thanks.
Counselor Bagley, and then Counselor Tabor.
Thank you, your honor. I've been thinking about this, probably at this point still don't know how I'm going to vote, although as my comments are about to show, you might have a strong inclination in which way I'm leaning. The city has limited time, resources, and money, especially after COVID. I worry about the lost opportunity costs if we continue to pursue the monument program and the effect that that could have in other areas of the city. So I will be taking this vote. It's a very difficult vote, and it's been on my mind considerably through all the non-public sessions and why I would have liked to have my time and energies focused elsewhere. This has been pretty consumed.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Tabor.
Thank you, your honor. I would be pleased to vote in favor of the motion. This is both a settlement agreement and a restart agreement. The settlement, I think, as the mayor said, is essential to moving ahead, no matter how it's developed, and get the city out from under that liability. We started our term with three lawsuits. This would have us settling two of the three. I hear a lot of criticism of the terms of the agreement, and I think that's fair input for us to listen to, but I don't hear criticism of building the community plan. I like the fact that in this document, the old plan, and I honestly hope all the wrangling over the old plan goes away. I do believe the community plan, with the Market Hall as a gathering place for all of us downtown, and all the other urban design features of the community plan can bring us together, and we can have some pride and sense of place out of this project. A little digression on how that plan was developed. When the previous McIntyre Subcommittee sought input, I don't think we ever anticipated how many residents would participate. Not 1,000, not 2,000, but 3,450 people took time to voice their feelings in a survey, and those results clearly called for a new design with less mass and density on Bow Street and a return of the post office. The survey was a basis for a subsequent community dialogue. We had 244 people participate, either in small group dialogues and study circles or in charrettes and surveys. 22 study circles, hundreds of hours of deliberation, and the result was what the principal group developed as the community plan. I remember one of the participants reviewing the final drawings wrote in the Zoom chat, "Hold fast to the vision." And that's the reason I'm voting for the restart agreement tonight, to do everything we can to make that vision a reality. And I will personally do everything I can to make that vision a reality. None of us, I think, on this council are naive about the difficulties ahead or the costs, but I'd just like to do a little history lesson. Back in 1977, the renovation of Market Square and the Hannibal Garage cost $2.4 million. What's that the equivalent of today? $11.2 million. Would we tax ourselves to do that today? But look at what it did. It revitalized the downtown. It created a defining place for our city. Some people call it our city's living room. So the several acres around Market Square today are also the most valuable real estate per acre in the state of New Hampshire. Long and short, public investment in great downtowns pays for itself in the long run. I think that's what we have to remember. If we create something, and I believe the community plan has this, that enhances our downtown, that is a place we want to go from all our neighborhoods and come down and use, and has that public benefit, it will pay for itself over the many years of its life, 75 years to be exact. And lastly, the swing in cost is even more dramatic here, because when you think we were on a course to potentially spend millions of dollars in litigation, tens of millions, if the city attorney is to be believed, to swinging, to investing that money in something that we get of benefit for the public, I think that's a good way to go. So I say, hold fast to the vision, and let's move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. Counselor Denton.
Thank you, your honor. As has been stated, both former chair, Wayland, Counselor Tabor, and now Mayor McKeconan have probably spent the most time, as anyone else in this room, involved on the McIntyre. I've likely been involved on this project for the longest amount of time. Just a little anecdote, when I first ran in 2013, I remember knocking on someone's door, and they asked what my plan for McIntyre was, and my plan was simply, I want to obtain the building. And they almost shut the door in my face, because they said, nope, you need to keep the building, you can't just get it. Ever since then, I've solely wanted to get the building. That was my primary objective when it came to the McIntyre. After actually getting elected in 2015, that council was given three options when it came to the property. The first one, I believe, was to go through a negotiated sale, which means that the city itself would have gotten the property, it would have cost taxpayers money to actually do what we wanted on it. The second option was let it go to the market, let developers do what they wanted to it within the zoning guidelines. And the third one was through the National Park Service program, where the city actually got some revenue from it, and we had some say in what developers did with it, but the developers would have to make a profit. At that time, it was just myself and Assistant Mayor Splain who wanted to do the public option, where it would in fact be taxpayer dollars, but we'd almost be guaranteed what we want to get at that property. However, the decision was made to pursue the National Park Service Monument Program, where a developer would be involved, and like I said, my goal was to get the property itself so we could do something. So I gladly participated in the process. We put out a request for proposals, and I remember in September 2017, at a work session, probably five or six developers actually presented, and my favorite presentation was by Wynn, I think it was Wynn Development, because they wanted to turn into affordable housing using a mixture of credits and grants, but unfortunately, come December 2017, they didn't actually put a bid in. There were three folks who put bids in, three developers, two of them wanted to put a hotel downtown, and the third one, Red Gate Kane, was the one who was not going to put a hotel in the property, and they had the most amount of public space. Not a huge amount of public space, but the most amount of public space which would allow to generate some income for the city, which is what the council decided they wanted to do as a policy. So I had pushed Red Gate Kane out of those three, and as we moved forward to the following term, there was a lengthy process which involved lots of public input. And it became clear that a lot in the public did not like what was actually put out there. It became more than clear, however, that seemed like the most likely path, that we would actually be able to obtain the building and get some public benefit from it. I remember back in August 2019, so about two and a half years ago, yes, I did indeed vote to send a binding application with Red Gate Kane to the National Park Service, again, because I felt that was the best opportunity we would have to get something from this. After that, the new council sworn in, and I have no doubt, they worked incredibly hard, and the public put a lot of hours into this community plan. The community plan, I like it a lot more, the concept of it, than what the prior council came up with, but there was no idea what the engineering costs would be, and we still don't know the total cost. That's some question out there. And what I think that showed, and the litigation that followed, was actually my fear, that that original process, which I'd agreed to and went along with, was probably the best opportunity we had to acquire the building. With that said, the settlement agreement before us resolves a bunch of the outstanding questions. So the question pretty much becomes, do we want to pursue the community plan, which a lot of people in the public clearly want? And this is indeed a agreement. It's not perfect by any means. When you come to settlement agreements, it's two sides, it's give and take. So yes, there are some things in there which we don't necessarily love as a council, but we would have to swallow it if we want to see the community plan happen. However, like Counselor Bagley said, I do have some reservations here, and I'm actually not sure how I'm going to vote, because if everything falls apart, it would indeed probably revert to a GSA sale, market value of the property, and I don't know how many restarts we could actually go through with this process. So if you want to see the community plan succeed, I think this is the best opportunity. But if you think that we should be done and walk away, it will likely go to a sale through the GSA, and a developer could do what they chose, what they would want to do with it under our zoning. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Denton. Counselor Cook, and then Counselor Blaylock.
Thank you, Mayor. Sometimes as city councilors, we're faced with making decisions that are not ideal. We have to weigh options that you don't necessarily like all the options, you may not like any of the options. In this case, I feel like we're making a decision based on the least worst option. And my motivation, through all of our discussions, has been finding the best option for the city of Portsmouth, Portsmouth that limits costs to taxpayers. It's very difficult to make that kind of decision when you don't know what the potential outcome is of pending litigation, but you do know that that litigation would continue if you don't reach an agreement. And so this has been, it's been a very difficult and challenging few weeks, I think, for the council to weigh these options, because I'll repeat, I don't think that there's a great option. There's not an ideal option for the city at this point. So we really have to look at what is the best option for right now. And in weighing that, I have truly struggled, and I've come to the meeting tonight not knowing how I would vote on this decision.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Counselor Blaylock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo some of the points that Counselor Cook just made. None of the decisions we make up here are easy. This is certainly one of the harder ones. Every decision, I want to do what's best for the city of Portsmouth today, tomorrow, and for the future. This certainly hasn't been the easiest process, you know, and it's, but I think what I decide to do tonight, I think is the best decision for Portsmouth going forward financially, for the people of Portsmouth, for the physical structures of Portsmouth, and I just, I hope you all know that. Thank you.
Counselor Lombardi. And Counselor Blaylock.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I made this motion because after looking at the data, after looking at what we were facing, I thought that this would be the best avenue to achieve the community plan. I know that there's still some risks. I know that GSA still holds the key, but I think that we have now at least the first piece of what we need to go to with GSA to resolve their, their questions, their problem. I think that the community plan, I, I'll step back, because when I was chair of the Historic District Commission, we looked at the Red Gate Plan, the Red Gate Kane Plan, and at that time, we did not have a vote in the HDC. I thought it was seriously lacking. It was seriously lacking open space, and I think that, I know the rest of the community thought that too. When I saw the proposal by the, for the community plan, I thought, this is really what has to happen in Portsmouth. And so resolving this litigation and assuming that we can resolve the issue with GSA, I would much rather spend those monies making the community plan than paying off a lawsuit. So this is why I am going to vote for this.
Thank you, Counselor Lombardi. Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, your honor. I'd echo a lot of the sentiment that we've heard tonight from the council, but also some of the concerns that we've heard from the public. We are all concerned about the overall cost of this project. Unfortunately, I think a lot of us, if we had a time machine, would go back to the, to the time that we developed the community plan and try to figure out some of those numbers and try to figure out some of those metrics before falling in love with the plan that we have all fallen in love with, before redesigning what will be a new center focus of our community. But we can't do that. So unfortunately, when you ask me to give you a number of what this will cost, I can't give you that. We cannot give you that. Would we love to? Of course. We are all here taxpayers also, we are all residents, we all love our community, and we understand the importance of moving forward with this project. A key factor of me and, for me, in this settlement was to never see this lawsuit again, to have it dismissed with prejudice, but also to make sure the community plan was the only plan on the table. It is, it is a difficult decision to stand up here and make these hard votes, as many of you here tonight in the audience have been in these seats and understand that all you do when you're up here is try to vote in order to be the best representative of the city that you can. And so it is with that that I believe that I will cast my vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. And with that, Kelly, I'd ask you to call the question.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Tabor.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counsel Moreau.
Yes.
Counsel Bagley.
No.
Counsel Lombardi.
Yes.
Counsel Blalock.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacken.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
And we need a roll call to vote, unless Counsel Bagley has already exited.
He's still there.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Tabor.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counsel Moreau.
Yes.
Counsel Bagley.
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi.
Yes.
Counsel Blalock.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacken.
Yes. Good night, Portsmouth.